The Dover Sherburne and Dover Sherburne Regional School Committees to order. Today is Tuesday, June 11th, 2024, and we are meeting in the Dover Middle School Library. The time is now 6:42. First, I would like to welcome our new members. We have Kate Cook joining us in Dover, Megga Caridala in Sherburne, Nathaniel Johnson, who can't be here this evening, is also joining us in Sherburne, Toa Ash is joining us at the Region, and Kevin Crady as well. For their benefit, I was hoping people could just introduce themselves, so that's why I sent you by district, so you can start to make a visual connection. So Sherburne folks, do you want to just introduce yourselves?
It's great to meet you. I'm Christine Walsh. I am the Chair for Sherburne.
I'm Becca Hammond. I am on the Sherburne Committee and have two kids at Pine Hill.
Maya Caridala, also from Sherburne. I have two kids in the Pine Hill District as well.
For three days.
For three days. And I'm a middle schooler.
I'm Kristin Aberley. I'm Sherburne School Committee, and I have three kids, one in a middle school and two at Pine Hill.
And then Nathaniel would be their fifth member to make the five. And then we start with the Region.
I'm Kate Potter. I'm on the Regional School Committee. I'm from Sherburne. I have two graduates from DS and one high schooler.
I'm Mark Healy. I'm the Chair, and I'm on the Regional School Committee, and I have three kids, and I'm just going to round up. They are entering grades eight, 10, and 12 next year.
I'm Colleen Burt. I'm on the Regional School Committee. I'm from Dover. I have two kids, one in seventh, one in fifth, so soon to be two middle schoolers, so please pray for me.
I'm Toa Ash. I'm on the Regional School Committee. I'm from Sherburne. I have two kids, one is 26, and one is going to be 16 in four days.
I'm Kevin Crady. I'm on the Regional School Committee. I have a fifth grader and seventh grader.
Thank you. And then Angie, do you want to say hello?
Sure. I'm Angie Johnson. Sorry I'm not there. I had a surgery yesterday, and it was a little bit more than I thought it would be. But I'm from Sherburne, and I have three kids, one who just graduated with a nursing degree from the University of Tennessee. I have one who's a sophomore in college, and one who is a rising sophomore at DS.
And where's your sophomore attend school, Angie?
He goes to Cole Gately and Hershey.
And then the Dover Committee.
Hi, I'm Goldie Sapir. I'm on Dover School Committee from Dover. I have a second grader and fifth grader.
I'm Jessie Hole. This is my second year now, or going to be second year, on the Dover School Committee. I have three children, two of which are in Chicaring. They're going, rising. They're currently a first grade, second grader, soon to be second and third grader, and a three-year-old, who will soon be at Chicaring before we know it.
Hi, I'm Kate Cook, new on Dover School Committee, also from Dover, and I will have a Chicaring kindergartner in the fall and a Chicaring third grader in the fall.
Martha Castle is also on the Dover School Committee. She couldn't be here tonight. And Jeff Cassidy is the Chair. He can't be here either, but he sends his best wishes for the evening. Okay. This is complicated. All three of us together, and you have one superintendent, and there's a... I'll try to explain clearly how this works. So Superintendentcy Unit 50 exists to hire and terminate a superintendent in matters pertaining to the superintendent's contract. The committee includes three voting members from Dover, three voting members from Sherburne, and three non-voting members or observers from the Region. Members of the Superintendentcy Unit 50 have historically been the most, three senior committee members from Dover and Sherburne. So from Dover, this would include Jeff Cassidy, Goldie Sapir, and either Martha Castle or Jessie Hole. Would someone from Dover like to nominate either Martha or Jessie for that third seat?
I'll vote by, I'll nominate Jessie.
Jessie?
Jessie Hole.
Okay. Is there a second?
Well, you have a corps, so that works out.
Kate Cook, second.
Any discussion? Would you accept?
I accept.
Okay. All in favor?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. And from Sherburne, the three senior members would be Christine Walsh, Kristin Aberley, and Becca Hammond. So again, if you need to hire or terminate your superintendent, you would come together because it's Dover and Sherburne School Committees who share a superintendent, and then you would work with the regional members, who also share your superintendent. Long, complicated story. We can get into it if you need to. Superintendentcy Unit 50, so it's those three members. So it's Jeff, Goldie, and Jessie, and the three Sherburne members, Christine, Kristin, and Becca. The six of you are now going to vote. Nobody else is going to vote, just those six people. You have to nominate a Chair for Superintendentcy Unit 50 from those six members, and then a Secretary. Typically, it's the Chair and the Secretary who then run these meetings. Historically, it has also been the most senior members. Doesn't have to be that way. If you did go that way, that would mean that it would be Jeff and Christine. Would anybody like to nominate someone for Chair of Superintendentcy 50? And it has to be one of those three members who nominates.
Yeah, and I will say it usually alternates with the town who does Chair, so.
So it's Dover's turn. So would somebody like to nominate either Jeff, Goldie, or Jessie to be the Chair of Superintendentcy 50?
Goldie's not here.
Yeah, you wouldn't do that. Okay. I would like to nominate Jeff Cassidy.
Better come to the meetings.
Okay. Is there a second for Jeff Cassidy as Chair of Union 50?
Second.
Second.
Becca Hammond, second.
Becca Hammond. Do those six members have any discussion?
None.
Okay. The six members can vote. Of the six members, how many are favorite Jeff as Chair? Okay. It's unanimous, minus Jeff. Great. Thank you. Now, you six members can choose a Secretary typically from Sherburne. So of the options, which are Christine Walsh, Kristin Aberley, and Becca Hammond, who would you like to be your Secretary, who would be second to Jeff in running these meetings? These meetings. These meetings, and if you ever need to hire or terminate a superintendent. So those six members can nominate either Christine.
I nominate Christine Walsh.
Is there a second?
Are you fine with that?
I asked her first. Okay. Is there a second for Christine as Secretary from those six members?
Second.
Second Jessie Hole. Any discussion among those six members? Okay. All in favor from those six members? All in favor, minus Jeff, who's not here. Excellent. So congratulations. Jeff is going to typically be running the meetings. However, because Jeff is not here, it goes to the Secretary. Christine, you are now going to run the rest of this meeting.
Yes. So happy. I am happy. Thank you. All right. So next on the agenda is community comments. We have provided a Zoom link for those who wish to make a comment, but for whom it is not possible or preferred to attend in person this evening. Are there any community comments, either on the Zoom or in person?
Nope. Nope.
Don't see anyone on the Zoom. Okay. Well, we are moving along then. Our next agenda item is Superintendent comments, and we'll hand it over to Superintendent McCoy.
Okay. Thank you. So I kept my Superintendent comments brief at last year's Dover, or last week's Dover and Sherburne meetings and tonight's Regional Meeting, because I thought tonight would be a good opportunity to share the updates together. So it's a year in review. I know that we just went through the Superintendent evaluation process, so I won't go too much into detail, but did want to kind of take a 30,000-foot view of everything that the District has done this year. So if you remember back in September, we talked about going back to our roots as a District and thinking about who we are and why we engage, as we do, with teaching and learning and supporting our kids. In doing that, we said, when you know your why, your what becomes more impactful. So really making sure that we're focusing our time and effort in the classroom, our time and effort as a committee, and our budget and finances to support who we are as a District and what we believe in. We had a number of District events this year that allowed parents, caregivers, and community members to re-ground themselves in the roots of challenge, success, and the portrait of a graduate. They're all listed here, and many of them are recorded and online on the DSU TV YouTube channel. So for those of you who'd like to learn more about any of these things, you are welcome to go and look up those videos and watch them. Back in September, rewind to September 12th. Denny and I presented our District Strategy. Last year, Denny and I were in our first year in our roles, and we went through a thorough entry process and looked for patterns within the community about the hopes and dreams of where Dover Sherburne will go in the next three to five years and develop the strategy. We won't go through all of this again, but we had five buckets that we identified, excellence and innovation in learning. So we wish to maintain academic excellence and rigor while adapting practices to prepare graduates for success in a rapidly changing world. That's Bucket One, with initiatives that we will tackle in the next three to five years. Bucket Two is to challenge and support all students, enhance programming to ensure all students are able to achieve their full potential within a supportive learning environment. That means both supporting students and extending learning for those students who are already ready and able. Professional learning and growth is our third bucket of the strategic plan. Expand opportunities for professional growth and collaboration among educators in support of the District's vision for teaching and learning, so making sure that our teachers are learning and practicing the skills that will allow our students to be prepared for the 21st century. Family and community engagement. Engage family and community members in the strategic pursuit of a shared vision and missions, so being sure that we are being transparent about the work that we're doing, getting feedback from parents in the community as they go, and tweak our strategic plan. And then the last bucket of our strategic plan is around safe and sustainable spaces. Evaluate and update facilities to ensure safe, sufficient, and sustainable spaces amidst a changing educational and environmental landscape. So I know that you all remember that from September, which then led us into the goals for this year around creating that shared vision of what teaching and learning should look like, continuing to work on students' sense of belonging, and then making sure that we're being transparent and open, and we're communicating with our parents and caregivers. So, five buckets. A few highlights from this year, and then where we're headed for next year. So under excellence and innovation in learning, we identified the district-wide nine best practices, and we had our educators by grade level and by department look at those best practices and say, what does collaboration look like in the classroom? What are the teachers doing? What are the students doing? What does the task look like? What does agency look like in the classroom? Went through all of those nine best practices, gathered the documents, gave them to Denny, and then he's going to do his magic over the summer to create kind of a unified what-to-look-for K to 12 when we talk about these nine best practices. We continued the curriculum review to make sure that our curriculum is rigorous, relevant, and representative. We did some professional development on artificial intelligence and drafted guidelines for our teachers and students, and our elementary folks know that we adopted a new math curriculum. So next year, we'll be implementing that new math curriculum. We're going to begin looking at our elementary literacy program to ensure that it meets the science of reading standards, as well as supports our students in advancing their literacy skills. The middle school social studies department is going to be piloting the investigating history curriculum, which has been put forth by DSE for a long time. There has not been a great middle school or elementary social studies curriculum, and the new standards came out, and they're fabulous, and a bunch of assistant superintendents a couple of years ago came together and said, we need help. And so DSE created this investigating history curriculum, which is in support of the standards. It's inquiry-based. The kids are asking big questions and learning about themes throughout history. So we're going to be piling that at the middle school, which then has an effect on high school history. So we'll be looking at the scope and sequence of high school history to make sure, for those of you who just heard Mr. Smith talk, that we are getting to, you know, 1970 to 2024, both world history and US history in that time period, so needing to make some adjustments and let go of some of the kind of older concepts to make sure that students have a real understanding of the more recent events and how that affects today. We're going to further develop the high school interdisciplinary course. You again heard Mr. Smith speak about that, and we'll have some presentations from the teachers working on that next year. It's very exciting and about to launch in the fall of '25, and then we'll be finalizing our AI guidelines and revising assessments so they're AI-proof moving forward. I won't read all of these, but a couple of highlights from challenging and supporting all students this year. We implemented restorative practices in response to student incidents, and again, there's a presentation if you'd like to watch that. We had challenge success. Year 10, we conducted a student survey, and this fall, we will be presenting more information about the results of that survey to all of you, as well as our parents and caregivers and community members. And as you know, we participated as a Metco 2.0 committed district and working with other Metco districts to make sure that our strategic plan and our vision for supporting all students matches that of the Metco headquarters and program. Moving forward, we're going to be launching some co-teaching in select classrooms, so that means in some classrooms across the districts, we'll have a general education teacher and a special education teacher working together seamlessly to support the needs of all students, as opposed to sometimes having the general education teacher leading the class with the special educator just kind of working on the side. They're actually going to co-plan and make it a seamless opportunity for students. We're going to have a new schedule and a what-I-need block at the middle school to provide students opportunity to get support and extend their learning if they've already met the benchmarks. We're increasing counseling at the elementary and middle school. I mentioned unpacking the challenge success data this fall. We want to provide an opportunity for educators to shadow students, to be reminded 10 years after we did this the first time, 10 years into challenge success, what it's like to live in a day of a life of a student, what are classes like, what is the schedule like, what is the social atmosphere like? So we're certainly going to encourage teachers to do that. And then Denny and I are going to be convening a Student Advisory Council to help guide us in our work and keep it real for us about the student experience. I think that's most exciting.
Is that high school students or is it across?
It's probably going to be across, whether they commit together or separately, but we certainly want to hear from all voices. Professional learning for our teachers. We've been working with our teacher leaders, K to 12. We had opportunity to bring them together in August and March, and coming out of the March meeting, they certainly wanted more time together, so we'll continue that opportunity. We hosted the in-district ideas course. So for those of you who remember Educator, the contract negotiations last year, it was the first time that we put an expectation into the teacher's contract, that they take a course on diversity, equity, inclusion. So this is the first year that we had a number of teachers enroll in that course, both veteran and new teachers, and we continue to recruit new and great, amazing hires at the job bears that we attend. Moving forward, we'll be doing PD around the new math program. Denny and I are going to work very hard with the principals to highlight exemplary practices in our newsletters, and we're going to ask principals to do the same. So when we see these best practices in action and students having agency and voice and choice and collaboration, we really want to highlight that happening, so all of our educators know what the expectation and goal is in our classrooms and can learn from each other as we go. Denny is in the process of revising and revising the mentoring and staff orientation program, so he'll tell you more about that in September, once he's lived through the August program. And we're onboarding a new Director of Educational Technologies. So we have hired Brandon Hall. He's joining us from Pembroke. Some of you had a chance to meet him on Zoom. He's been with us already three days in the District visiting, and we are so excited. Dawn can attest to this too, about him coming in and adding an educational component to the role of our Technology Director. Family and community engagement. We have a new website. We had many events that I alluded to. We had the State of the District presentation. We're soon going to appoint Metco representatives to the School Committee in a few minutes. The annual report went out in the mail to all households, so it was accessible for not only parents and caregivers, but taxpayers. Next steps, we'll continue to work on the website. Parent Square is coming. We have a lot of work to do around getting parents on-boarded to that this summer. We're going to look at finalizing our response to hate and bias-based incidents, so that we as a District have a kind of common way of addressing those incidents, and we're not dealing with them in the moment. And then further educating our students in our community about the history mission of Metco. I think it's time that we revisit that now that we're launching Metco 2.0. Lastly, safe and sustainable places. We continue, as always, to refine our safety protocols. We installed internal cameras on the regional campus. We had a space audit at the middle and high school, so we have some new collaborative spaces, as well as splitting up some classrooms to create more spaces for our programs and our students. And our Pine Hill Sherburne School Committee certainly knows that we conducted an H-back study and are looking at next steps for that building. So stay tuned. We'll have some new spaces here when you visit, and then there'll be a long, lengthy discussion about the future of Pine Hill. I just want to recognize this time of year, we have so much to celebrate, but we want to celebrate the careers of all of these folks, as well as wish them well in their next chapter. So Barbara Brown, a legend in her time, is retiring, and thank you to the CSA. They had a great tribute to her Friday night at Lookout Farm with over 500 former and current families coming to wish her well.
I heard you had a special ride to get there on time.
Oh, I just flew in my car.
Were there police with you? Oh, that's the rumor that Candice told me.
They were chasing her, that was all.
That's so funny.
Graduation got moved from Thursday night to Friday night, so I stepped off the stage of graduation, got in my car, and maybe did a little bit over the speed limit to get to Barb's party. Kim Delaney from Chicaring, John Hickey, our high school history teacher and department chair is retiring, Lindsay Lee, an English teacher at the high school, Joan Martin, who's been a longtime educational assistant at Pine Hill, Audrey Moran, for those who have students in special education, either inside or out of the District, would know Audrey. Kim Baylen is our middle school social studies teacher and curriculum leader. She is retiring. Lori Ryan, for those of you who know, our librarian at Pine Hill is going to be retiring this fall, and more recently, Megan Scobie has just indicated that she is going to be retiring. Appreciate all of these people. They're going to be missed for sure, so have a chance to send them a note or an email. Please let them know that we appreciate all that they've done for our students. Which brings us to personnel updates. I'm not going to read you all the slides, but we've done a lot of hiring. This is a very busy season for our principals and their teachers, as they convene hiring committees for all these principals, and then all the paperwork comes to Central Office. So just a shout out to Diane McCroby and Tracy DiFlamino in the Business Office for onboarding and doing all of the paperwork to get these folks ready for August. Very exciting. Few announcements. I mentioned Brandon Hall is our new Director of Technology. Pine Hill Allison Gullingsrude is going to be the new principal, Jen Ryan, the new assistant principal. And Pine Hill and Chicaring used to share a pre-K to two special education coordinator and a three-through-five special education coordinator. We are now splitting them, so Pine Hill has one pre-K to five, and Chicaring has one pre-K to five, so we're bringing someone on board to fill the Pine Hill slot, as that person has left. Ann Dever Keegan has been made the permanent principal at the middle school, which is fantastic, and Tim Amara, the permanent assistant principal of high school. I'll let you process that slide later.
We need parents' words.
And summer projects. We will continue strategic planning. You've all heard from your building leaders about their draft school improvement plans. You've heard from me, some sample goals that we'll be working on as a District, and then our leadership team will come together for a retreat this summer and put it all together and refine it and talk about what's manageable and how we break it into smaller pieces, and then we'll come back to you in September with a more refined plan. Our educators have many workshop days planned this summer, where they'll get paid to work on all of the initiatives you've been hearing about from your principals and from us, and to get some work done when they don't have to worry about grading and lesson planning on a day-to-day basis. And Denny, of course, will give you an overview of that in the fall. The state is rolling out a new IEP format for our students on educational plans, so our special educators are busy learning what that format looks like. It's very much more comprehensive, it's more student-centered, and there's more voice and data going into it, but certainly a lot more work that needs to be done and a new format. So we're going to try to learn that before we have to implement it next year. And then facility upgrades, as you've all approved through your budgets. Chicaring will have new flooring going into their fourth and fifth grade wing, and the Region is about to get new bleachers and press box. So as Dawn just mentioned during our Regional Meeting, you might want to take a picture of the press box and bleachers, because they will no longer be there on Monday.
And you actually have it. That's the picture. As of Monday, it's going to be torn down.
Planned, but not planned. I think that's it. So I'm happy to take any questions or feedback, comments.
So much incredible work. I can't even imagine where you both find time during the day to sleep, but thank you for all the...
You don't sleep during the day.
No sleep. Don't sleep during the day. But thank you all, both, so much for everything that you do for our children, and next year looks just as incredible.
Thank you. And I do want to mention that this is a team effort. All of these things get done because of Dawn and Kate and all of the building leaders and teachers, so it's not just Denny and I. It's a whole team effort, so thank you.
I just wanted to say, I heard from a community member that they were very appreciative of the District annual report that was sent to the households. It's a senior citizen in town who really felt much more informed, and they felt that you were doing a wonderful job.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
I second that. There's been so much positive feedback on the actual, physical copy of the report. Everybody loves it.
Yeah. Great. Thank you. We had a few sweat moments in that process. Thank you.
The day of the history books.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone. Again, if you have any thoughts or input that you want folded into the planning process for next year, feel free to reach out at any point to me by phone or email, and we can have a conversation as we all sit down this summer in the quiet to get some strategic planning done.
The summer does not sound quiet, but we know where to find you.
You can actually sit down and get something done without being interrupted in the summer on a wood.
Excellent. Next on the agenda is discussion items. To my knowledge, we do not have any discussion items on the agenda, so we can move on to action items. We have two action items this evening. The first is to ratify the Educational Assistance Unit B contract. And again, Superintendent McCoy, would you please provide us with an overview of the process and the proposed contract?
Sure. And Dawn, feel free to jump in as well, because you've been integral in this process. So last year, we negotiated the educators' contract, as well as our custodial agreement, our food service agreement, and that with the administrative assistance. When we met with the educational assistants last year, we negotiated the one-year agreement, because there were some terms that we couldn't come to terms on, and therefore, we wanted to give them a one-year agreement and buy ourselves more time to collaborate with them. So together, this year, they officially joined the Educators Association. So now the teachers are Unit A within the Dover Sherburne Education Association, and the educational assistants are Unit B, which affords them more rights and opportunities as they move forward in their work, and there are certainly a large number of them. So it makes sense that they would have done that. So thank you to our members from the Board of Selectmen and Select Boards who came to join us for negotiations with the educational assistants. It's been a long week. So I know some of you were on that, including Mark and Becca and Liz Grossman. Thank you for representing the school committees through that process. And officially, we came to agreement on many terms in May, and since then, the contract has been presented to the educational assistants. They have voted to approve it, so tonight is your opportunity to approve it as well and make it official for next year. Dawn, I don't know if there's anything you'd like to add?
No. So, you know, it's sort of still a separate contract, but a little bit different, because I think where it's different is that we used to meet with representatives from the actual educational assistance population that was who we negotiated with. Now, we're actually basically negotiating with the MTA rep and representatives from the Unit A. So they sit with us, but they, you know, they have delegated their negotiation rights to Unit A. So it was a little bit of a different process for us. I think you guys, I think we had a really good team.
Yes.
Also joining us is our attorney, our Leo Council attorney, John Steinman. And so it was a quicker process than we normally do with the educators, but you can see, we covered a lot of ground when you see all that's actually in the memorandum of agreement. It's probably more than it seems. There was some cleanup, because anytime you start looking at a contract in its entirety, you find things you want to tweak, and then they were, their proposals were bringing forward language that was already negotiated and approved in the educators' contract that they wanted to mimic. So predominantly, the parental leave and the child rearing was something that we took verbatim from Unit A's contract and embedded. I think we continue to not have steps in any of our association contracts except for the educators, and so we were able to continue that process. And so where we mirror what steps would be in other districts is where you see the more aggressive longevity that we see. So that sort of mirrors, so we don't have steps, but the longer you're here, you start getting a longevity payment, which would mimic steps if you were someplace else and getting larger rate increases. So, I think that's important to sort of put that in context. If you by chance ever went and looked at other districts, our longevity looks very generous, but that's because it's there to serve as a means of not having steps. So, I think that's important to point out. But I think, obviously, in any negotiations, the financial pieces are, you know, what you come down to the end with, and that's where we were. And so, you know, I think we had increases in hourly rates and the longevity that continues to make us competitive out in the higher rate market, which was our desire, and we're continuing to add stipends to sort of migrate with what we're doing in the school. So, this year was the first year we had the registered behavioral technician as an additional stipend for special education assistance that is continuing into the contract, and it's more formally embedded in the contract. And then, obviously, the elementaries are familiar with the interventionist. That is a stipend that is added on to the Gen Ed EA1 position. So, I think in the end, everyone felt like, you know, it was a win-win for both. And so, if there's any other questions, you know, Mark was our chair. Not an easy task.
No, but I'm happy to add a quick comment. Yeah, and I don't know if everyone knows, but I work in the Needham Public Schools. So, I've been on that side of the negotiations in Needham and the school committee side here in Dover Sherborne, and I really felt like we had a very respectful, intentionally kind of active conversation throughout as we tried to see what was an interest from both sides here. We know we have a fixed kind of budgetary constraint, and we also want to provide a fair competitive contract. It's, whether I'm in Needham or Dover Sherborne, I actually have to say, it's been always a really informative and insightful, interesting process to go through. I think it's been respectful in this case, very much along the entire way, and kind of a relief that we all got to kind of put our criteria constraints out on the table and think together on how to make solutions.
Becca, is there anything you wanted to add? Is your first time through?
It was eye-opening.
And Becca's going to volunteer to explain steps and major C's to anybody who was new to the committee.
That is one of the things I learned, late-night Googling.
And it is a two-year contract, which will then line them up again to be in sync with the educators and custodians and other contracts moving forward. So, tonight, we present to you their two-year contract to hopefully approve, and then we can move forward.
Right. So, what you're approving are all the changes, and then we'll take, once this is approved, we take it and we incorporate it into the formal contract. So, what you're approving are all the changes to the existing contract, which will then serve as the basis for fiscal year '25 and '26 contract.
Are there any additional comments or questions? Hearing none, I'm going to turn it over to Golli, who will help facilitate a vote from Dover.
Sure. Thank you. May I please have a motion from the Dover School Committee to approve the educational assistance Unit B contract as proposed?
Jesse, hold some.
Thanks, Jesse. May I have a second?
Kate Cook, second.
Thanks, Kate. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
I will now invite a motion from the Sherborne School Committee to approve the educational assistance Unit B contract as proposed.
Becca Hammond, so moved.
Thank you, Becca. May I have a second?
Megga Cadiola, second.
Thank you, Megga. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you all. I'm going to turn it over to Mark, who will help facilitate a vote from the region.
Thank you. May I please have a motion from the regional school committee to approve the educational assistance Unit B contract as proposed?
Colleen Bird, so moved.
All right, Colleen Bird, thank you. And may I have a second?
Kate Potter, second.
Kate Potter, second. Thank you, Kate. Any discussion? All in favor? Passes unanimously. Thanks.
Thank you, Mark. The second action item is the appointment of the Metco representatives to the school committees. Per the Dover Sherborne Metco representative to the Dover Sherborne and regional school committee policy, Metco representatives or co-representatives shall be chosen annually by the Boston Dover Sherborne Metco parent organization and appointed by the school committees for a one-year term. The following Boston parents have been chosen to serve on the school committees. For Dover, we have Shaniqua Pereira. For Sherborne, we have Kimberly Grant. And for the region, we have Shamika Debnan. I'm going to turn it over to Golli to facilitate a vote from Dover's committee.
Thank you, Christine. May I please have a motion from the Dover School Committee to appoint Shaniqua Pereira as the Dover Sherborne representative to the Dover School Committee?
Jesse, hold some.
Thank you, Jesse. May I have a second?
Kate Cook, second.
Thank you, Kate. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion ends.
Thank you, Golli.
Thank you.
I will now invite a motion from the Sherborne School Committee to appoint Kimberly Grant as the Dover Sherborne Metco representative to the Sherborne School Committee.
Becca Hammond, so moved.
Thank you so much, Becca. May I have a second?
Megga Cadiola, second.
Thank you, Megga. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? The motion passes unanimously. Turning it over to Mark for the region's vote.
Thank you. May I please have a motion from the regional school committee to appoint Shamika Debnan as a Dover Sherborne representative to the regional school committee?
Colleen Bird, so moved.
Thank you, Colleen. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Kevin Crowder, thank you. Any discussion?
I would just like to say thank you to these parents for taking their time out of their very busy days and their family time as well in the evenings to join this group. I think it's really important, and I look forward to hearing from them frequently. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. I did want to point out, too, that they're all joining us, so.
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you all. And just to echo Colleen and Kate, we are so honored to have you here with us. We look forward to robust conversations and amazing accomplishments ahead. Thank you for taking up your time, your precious moments of the day to be a part of this effort. We are so delighted to have you.
And thank you, Christine. Technically, I think I still need to do the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, officially, we did it right now. I'm just too excited to have you here.
Yeah, that's okay. No, we have discussion, and then all, so all in favor for the regional vote? Thank you. Unanimously passed. Thank you.
Very exciting. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Is there anything you'd like to say?
Thank you, guys. I was wondering, at what time are we going to be introduced?
Now you're officially in.
Hello?
Thank you so much for your patience.
Of course.
And at least from our point of view, as we were going through the other items, you are so worth the wait. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mark. I promise not to step on your vote going forward.
No, it's fine. Thanks.
We have two consent items this evening on the agenda. The first item is to appoint Superintendent Elizabeth McCoy to the TEC and Except Board of Directors. Superintendent McCoy, can you please provide some context?
Sure. So, our school district belongs to two collaboratives, both the tech collaborative in Wapole and the Except collaborative in Natick. And for some of the students for which we are unable to meet their needs here in the district because they're so extensive or because we'd like them to be with like students and have a cohort, we send them to the collaboratives. And Wellesley, Weston, Wayland, Wapole all belong to these collaboratives too, which makes a meaningful experience for our students as well as a fiscally responsible option for us as a district. There is a board of directors that oversees both the tech and the Except collaborative, so we work with the directors of those collaboratives to make sure that their functionality maintains all the DUSI guidelines and they build fiscally responsible budgets. So, just as you oversee your districts, the board of director oversees the tech collaborative and the Except collaborative. It is past practice here as well as in other districts that you appoint the superintendent to represent you on both those board of directors, so that is the ask tonight.
Any questions or comments? The second item is to approve the minutes of the April 2nd, 2024 joint meeting of the school committees. Are there any edits?
No.
Okay, then I will turn it over to Golli for Dover's vote.
Okay, thank you. May I please have a motion from the Dover School Committee to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Jesse, hold some.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Kate Cook, second.
Thank you, Kate. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
I will now invite a motion from the Sherborne School Committee to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Becca Hammond, so moved.
Thank you, Becca. May I have a second?
Kristen Aboli, second.
Thank you, Kristen. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Passes unanimously. And Mark for the region?
Thank you. May I have a motion from the regional school committee to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Kate Potter, so moved.
Kate Potter, thank you.